...order. We will stand, have prayer, said by Elder Michelle. We'll have the pledge, and after which I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence for Eleanor Alfred Mitchell, grandmother of fire, Training Officer Rodney Brown, Willie Payne, the grandfather of Public Works employee Charles Thaxton, and retired Fire District James Murphy. At this time, we will have prayer.
You bow your heads with me. O precious heaven and father, once again, God, we are coming before you. God, we pray to your blessings upon this meeting tonight. Be the unseen guest. Help us in the decisions that need to be made for the benefit of this city, oh God. We pray your blessings on them now, and we ask it in your precious son, Jesus' name, we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and I wish to express my appreciation for your attendance to this meeting. Your presence is so important to us, and we certainly want you to be well informed about the business of the city. As usual, I have some announcements to make. We experienced a computer glitch that created some problems with our occupational license, Ms. Goldman, and also the outside sewer limits. We corrected that problem, so we apologize for any problems that you may have experienced as a result of that computer glitch. Work fair will be held for DG Foods April 20th at the Bastrop Municipal Center at 8:00, and we were working towards getting them to stay a little longer than the regular day to accommodate other people who might want to get in later. The MAC Day. We are so very proud of the work that has been done and led by some citizens of this parish, in particular, Mr. Jimmy Christmas, and you're here with us. If you would join us. The ribbon cutting is coming up. Come on, make your way to the microphone. The ribbon cutting is coming up on April the 28th, and the grand opening is April the 29th at 6:00 PM. We have a proclamation. Mr. Christmas, if you would, speak to the activities, and we really want to applaud you. Fifteen years in the making, and to just hang in there.
Well, thank you. We're really excited about it. We see a lot of familiar faces here that have assisted us in this coming reality. It's two more weeks. We'd like just a few things next week, and we'll be completely through. April the 28th, which is on a Thursday at 2:00, we'll have our ribbon cutting with the governor and all the dignitaries here. Friday, we'll have a sort of a food fair, all-you-can-eat type dinner from 4:00 to 6:00 there at the Activity Center, followed by a big night of entertainment. On Saturday, beginning at 10:00, we'll have youth activities all day, anywhere from a performance group, a prestige group out of Greenwell Springs, Louisiana, a group of youngsters performing, to parade of breeds, and shows, and petting zoos, and all kinds of activities. Got a wagon train coming in, got a group of guys that have teams, and they'll be giving a parade, and then we'll top it off Saturday night with a rodeo, LRCA rodeo. Sunday morning at 10:00, we'll have cowboy church and some roping events. So, we've got a big, big weekend to start this, this center off. I want to say thank you for everybody, from the city, and the police jury, and all the businesses and citizens that have supported this. It's just remarkable, the support that we've received. I thank you.
If you'll stay there, Mr. Christmas. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, whereas the Mayor and Board of Alderman would like to congratulate you on your effort to construct the Morehouse Activity Center, and whereas this Activity Center has been a long time coming, and we applaud you for your perseverance to make the opening in Morehouse Parish a reality, whereas the citizens of the City of Bastrop and Morehouse Parish will have a facility which we will be proud for visitors to patronize, and whereas we remain excited and look forward to the Morehouse Activity Center opportunities and what it has to offer. Now therefore, be it resolved that Betty Alfred Olive, Mayor for the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2011, as MAC Day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Goldman, if you would, roll call to determine a quorum. Mr. Christmas, I wanted to accommodate your schedule in case you needed to leave. Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
All present, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We have other proclamations. I've received some communication from the Louisiana Municipal Association regarding financial literacy in the state of Louisiana, and we have issued a proclamation to that effect. It is so important for citizens to, to be educated on financial literacy, especially during this time of economic downturn. The Fair Housing Month also, we have issued a proclamation, and that proclamation is posted outside my door on the bulletin board. The annual Easter egg hunt sponsored by the American Legion Post 501 and the City of Bastrop will be held at Dotson Park on the 4th, 23rd, at 11:00 AM. Senator Vitter held a town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago, had an opportunity to meet with him and share with him some of the needs that we are experiencing here in the city, and I plan to stay in touch with him and follow up. I have sent another letter to the DOT requesting them to revisit the red light situation at the Marlet and 425, and that the visitors, we will have a lot of traffic in that area at the MAC Center. We have crawfish going on fest, we have the fairgrounds, and the Ag Building is over in that direction, and I trust that they will give us due consideration, as in our last meeting concluded with, they would come back and revisit if there was an appreciable amount of activity in that area. I received some communication also from Senator Mary Landry in regards to the next Water Resource Development Act. I have submitted two proposals, and as you all know, that there's very slow movement in Washington DC now, but we did get some proposals in through our Washington DC consultant, Stephen Pruitt, and that's to move the treatment plant on Martin Luther King to another location, and also to request funds for the Bastrop flood damage reduction. We're looking inside the city limits, and we continue to press forward to get some things done in that respect. The financial conditions that's facing the city, last month, we, we had a meeting, and we talked about the problems that we are experiencing, and I know everybody is interested in what's going on, but we are experiencing problems just other, as other municipalities are, with decreasing revenues. But we still have services to maintain in this area. IP departed, leaving a hole in our budget, and there was a rippling effect that occurred. We had dealerships to leave, we have had fast food restaurants to close, along with other businesses that have downsized as a result. And we have to make up that difference some way or the other, and we have an obligation to provide police, fire, and maintain city services even though the revenue stream is, is shrinking. If you would take a look at the PowerPoint on municipal retirement, and let's start at the bottom and look at 2009, '10, we were at 13.5%. Then '10, '11, it creeped up to 14.25%, and '11, '12, we're looking at 16.75%. Next one, please. Fire retirement, looking at the bottom, '09, '10, 14%, '10, '11, 21.5%, '11, '12, 25 point, 25%. Next one. Police retirement, '09, '10, looking at the bottom, 11%, '10, '11, 25%, '11, '12, 28%. Next one, please. State retirement, '09, '10, looking at the bottom, 18.6%, '10, '11, 22%, '11, '12, 30.5%. Next one. Retirement increase, '09 through, 2009 through 2012, fire, 11.25%, police, 17%, municipal, 3.25%, state, 11.9%. Next one, please. Municipal retirement increases, '09, '10, and looking at dollar values, $161,933. '10, '11, $170,288. '11, '12, $163,000. Fire retirement increase, '09, '10, $168,638. '10, '11, $265,525. '11, '12, $319,412. Next one. Police retirement, '09, '10, $123,364. '10, '11, $280,161. '11, '12, $313,780. Next one. State retirement increases in terms of dollars, '09, '10, $4,678. '10, '11, $5,537. '11, '12, $7,677. The total, if you was to look at the top, '09, and we're going in a different order, for '09, '10, $458,613, and '11, '12, $841,032. That's a lot of money, and we're still wrestling with how we're going to maintain services. We have another slide. Let's look at the Fire Department. Historically, 49 would be the optimum level. We're short nine people. Police Department, historically, 39. We're short seven people. Public Works, historically, the optimum level is 49. We're short 15 people. Heard someone say, is that the last one? Heard someone say that city needs to tighten the belt. We have tightened our belt, and every cut that we make has a consequence to you, the citizens of this, this city. If we cut the Police Department, you're gonna see it in services, and until someone breaks in your home, or something happens, and we have to have the Police Department to respond, and we don't have adequate backup, I, I would feel very guilty at that. But the cut has to come from somewhere. When we look at the Fire Department, how does that affect you? Recently, we went through a rating, and I applaud Chief Montgomery and Officer, Training Officer Rodney Brown. They worked very hard to get a three. We went from a two to a three. We struggled to hold on to that, but anything beyond that is gonna affect your insurance premiums, so the cut will be a consequence to you, and it's going to go into your pocket. Public Works, they're already short 15 people, and they have to maintain streets, recreation, cemeteries. Where's the money gonna come from? This administration has an obligation to see to your well-being. In our administrative department, we are at very bare minimum, and we have an obligation to have that office staffed adequately for check and balance. So I ask that you bear with us as we explore revenue opportunities. We're not out to offend anyone, but we have an obligation to look out for your well-being. At this time, if there are any council members that would like to make a comment in reference, I will allow you time to make a statement. Thank you, and I know that we have some comments later on, and we're going to allow you time to express yourselves and give your, your thoughts as you communicate it with the agenda. Are there any other announcements? Thank you for your attention. Item number four, at this time, I will approve or entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting held on March 10th, and a special meeting held on March 31st, 2011.
I make a motion, Mayor, to approve the previous minutes.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Discussion? Public comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Finance Committee Report Resolution, 111369, Bills and Claims for the Month of March 2011. Mr. Locke?
Mayor, I move that we accept the Finance Committee Report, Bills and Claims for the Month of March 2011.
Properly moved?
I'll second that motion.
And second. Are there any questions? Discussion? Public comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Morehouse Economic Development Corporation, Ms. Kay King. Welcome back, Ms. King. We've missed you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I've been out of town the last couple of City Council meetings, and I'm sorry that I haven't been able to keep you, keep you informed about what's been going on with our economic development efforts. I've got some handouts tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that this might be kind of old news, and that the newspaper did an article about DG Foods being awarded a Community Impact Award for the trade and industry magazine. This is a national, and it covers Canada, mostly United States and Canada, and I wanted you to have a copy of the article so that you could read this. This is for distribution, and our organization purchased an ad in this publication, and I think they, that's on the last page, the ad that we put in, and they strategically placed it under a biomass project, and since that's one of our target industries, I was very pleased with the placement in, in the article, but we're very excited that this project is gaining national attention. We think that, in the advertisement, we're gonna continue to try to play up the positive aspects of Morehouse Parish. Many communities are dealing with many of the similar things that Morehouse Parish is dealing with, and we wanna continue to kind of draw on the positive things. One of, one of the industries that was in our redevelopment plan, our organization, we're continuing to review those, those target industries, and we still have a couple of biomass prospects that are looking at the area. One of them's been very active. I've been working with that gentleman this week, and so I still believe in our, my board members believe that the biomass is gonna be a good target industry for this community, and it's not specifically located inside the city limits of Bastrop, but it's very close to proximity of the city limits of Bastrop. So, you know, we kinda like to get those things not in the center of town like, like International Paper, but, but one of the things I think that we have to continue to focus on is when we're doing our advertising, and when we're promoting the, the community outside of this area, that we're at a certain point, maybe, you know, I, I'm trying to get past the International Paper thing and tell people a little bit about the positive aspects that we have here, and we do have a number of things that are listed in that advertisement. Planning another similar advertisement in a magazine that I've, I've advertised in before, and I'll be getting with, in touch with the airport manager, and we wanna kind of feature the airport in that ad, and we'll be doing that coming up in the next month, that we'll have that. So I think that, I just kinda wanted to come here tonight and let you know that we're still on track with our redevelopment plan, we're still continuing to kind of evaluate those items that are on there, our target industries, and continuing to work to promote the community for those. Do I have any questions about anything? Mr. Armstrong?
The new industrial park on 165, can you sort of bring us up to speed?
Well, we are still working on that, and we're looking at, you know, we, we had a primary site, and we're still looking at some potential sites in that area, and evaluating where we need to go on that. I believe we'll have a conference call scheduled on that in the next few weeks, and so we're continuing to move forward with that project.
We will have a conference call coming up. We're still evaluating information as it is provided to us, Mr. Armstrong, on the feasibility of acquiring proper, property and the location.
And one thing that I've been doing over the past month, too, is focusing on, you know, working on our inventory of available properties, and, you know, working with some of the people that have come in, I've kind of come across some properties that I think have a lot of potential, and so the state initiative is to get, get sites certified as being development-ready, so we're continuing to work on multiple sites, not just that site. An example is that we did identify a site north of Bastrop for this biomass prospect, so we're continuing not to just, you know, sometimes you have to focus, but sometimes you have to, to look at the circumstances and modify your plans according to what the circumstances are. Any other questions? Well, I'm gonna keep it brief tonight, glad to be with you, and I'll try not to stay away so long.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. King. We appreciate all the work that you've done with DG Foods and your support with the new industrial site, and we know that you continuously looking for economic activity for this community. We appreciate you so much. This is a perfect gateway to item number seven. Mr. Elton, Brent Elton, our airport manager, we met, and we're looking at updating our airport plan and visibility, that, I appreciate you mentioning that, Ms. King, because we do want to showcase what we have available in this community. Mr. Elton?
Good evening. As the mayor said, we have met with the engineers that are gonna be doing our airport layout plan update, and they kind of gave us just a brief overview of what they're gonna be doing with the surveys and the forecast for our airport, for what they expect to see as far as growth in our airport, and they told us that they're gonna put together several options for us and see what direction we wanna go with, how we want to develop the airport in the future, with different layout plans and designs to, you know, best utilize our resources out there, which one thing we do have out there, a lot of, is land, so we've got plenty of land available for development. We just need to get that plan updated, and I think from that point, you know, aggressively search for people to invest in infrastructure out there. You know, hopefully that'd be something that, you know, the city wouldn't have to foot the bill on, but we could find private investment to, to put money in out there for us. And they, I'm not sure exactly, I don't remember exactly when they said they'd have those options ready, but at some point, we'll make a presentation on that, when they do have those available. Other than that, the airports operating normally, everything looks pretty good out there. I know this next item, we'll be discussing some upgrades we're doing out there as well.
Yeah. This is item number eight, Resolution 111375, a resolution of the Mayor and Board of all the persons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for the purchase and installation of the upgrades to the automated weather observing system, AWOS 3PT, for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Mr. Elton?
And basically what this is, is the Alan Taylor with the Department of Transportation handles basically all the NAVAids for the state. He's the guru of NAVAids, as far as we're concerned, and he's gotten some money together from the state to upgrade several different of these weather stations around the state, and he's kind of just doing this all at one time to get it all in one big swoop. And what they're gonna do is get us a new display for inside of the terminal, which will display the information graphically that the AWOS actually gathers, the wind speed, cloud conditions, temperature, humidity, that sort of thing, information pilots would need for making a flight plan or deciding whether to go or not. And they're also gonna upgrade the temperature and humidity probe, which has had some intermittent failures from time to time, so that'll be replaced with an upgraded unit, which should operate without any problems. And I think there's gonna be a little bit of money left over, where they're also gonna update our lighting on AWOS, it's the, basically the safety lighting on it, to make sure nobody runs into it with an aircraft. So that'll be going to a LED design that's gonna be cheaper and easier to maintain, should cost a lot less. And if I'm reading everything right, and after talking with Mr. Taylor, this grant should cover everything, including all the upgraded equipment and installation costs, you know, just be on a routine service call from our NAVAids guy that maintains all of our equipment.
Having heard that presentation from Mr. Brent, at this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 111375.
So moved?
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Are there any questions? Discussion? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brent.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board.
Item number nine, we are going to table until we have more information on item number nine. We're coming up to item number 10, and I ask that you will limit your comments to, to two minutes. We recognize that the threat of litigation is still before us, so we are going to be very conservative in our remarks, that we have to say, at this time, Mr. Randy Bieber, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Randy Bieber, 407 Texas Avenue, Bastrop, Louisiana. I'd like to begin this address I have with the webpage greeting that we got on our City of Bastrop webpage, it says, "Welcome to the City of Bastrop, hometown Louisiana, a place where business is done by handshake, where folks still wait to each other, and they say, 'How are you? How are you?'" In that spirit, People's Water Service has been providing quality water service for 70 years in this community. We have a track record of operating in a professional manner, and because of advanced planning and annual investment back to our system, we're prepared to meet the future needs of our residents and growth of our industry base. to meet the future needs of our residents and growth of our industry base. We stand ready to provide quality water to DG Foods, just as we were capable of providing emergency water to DG Foods when they had that terrible fire last month. And I know it's interesting that the city's rationale for taking us over by a quick take is purely for perceived financial reason. But nowhere have I heard any displeasure of our service, the quality of our environmental stewardship, what, what we care and what we show, what we do for our community. We understand, I understand, that the city is in a desperate financial condition, looking for a cure. And it's, and I know it is sad that the city's pension plan is underfunded, the city cannot afford some of the basic services that it needs, fire and police departments, as was mentioned. But I feel, as do citizens of Bastrop, citizens of Morehouse Parish, the Chamber of Commerce in Bastrop, state-elected officials, that taking over People's Water and would expand the city's responsibilities and would increase more debt to the city, and it would not be a viable solution. And I ask that through this process, that please, don't make a decision in haste that will affect me, fellow citizens, fellow citizens' children, my children, that live here in our future decades. People's Water, we want to stay in Bastrop. We're not for sale. Please, let us do our job and continue being stewards of our community and our environment. Thank you.
Mr. Beaver, if you will remain there. As before, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Nasaka, would you make note of any concerns that the citizens have? And at the end of all of the presentations, I'm gonna ask that you take the lead, you and Mr. Nasaka, in answering any questions as a result. Mr. Beaver, I received a call yesterday from a citizen who stated that 250 customers' water service had been turned off. Could you, to help me with, with the information in regards to that?
We, as, we have a cutoff notice and agreement with that. As a contractual, I'm assuming that's what that was talking about. I, I don't even know, I'd like to know more, some more information. But if, unfortunately, if a person hasn't paid their water, or as we're stewards of the city services for sewer services, and if someone hasn't paid their sewer bill, that we do make sure that the city does get that back, we provide that service of cutoff. We, we do that as directed as necessary for the city also, with sewer and with water. But we're, we're open, five days a week during business hours. If they have any concerns, to pay their bill or anything we, we can do with that, we, we have a legacy of customer service. I would like to know the names of the 250 people that, that contacted you yesterday to make sure that they're being provided for.
Is that your average cutoff rate, 250 in one day? Or is that true? I, I promised the constituent that I would find out, I knew I would see you tonight?
Yes.
Is that your average cutoff rate?
That's, that's a large number. I mean, with the small workforce we have, we would not be able to cut off 250 services in one day. I, I don't, I'd like to, I'd like to get some more information from you. I wish I'd gotten some more before the meeting during business hours, so I could've attended to it more succinctly than I'm able to right now.
Okay. Was it to a certain geographical area that, as you recall, she stated that the area was Hoover, Williams Drive, over in that vicinity? Do you have any knowledge of that?
If it's, if it's cutoffs, it's where the, the person didn't pay the bill. Again, I, I don't know what you're referring to, but, but it's, I mean, specifically, but if it is a cutoff, it's specifically to the residents that didn't pay their sewer bill, which is where, that we're getting funded, funds back to the city for, or their water bill. So, I, again, I look forward to getting some more information from you and getting this resolved.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. I, I committed that I would raise the question to, to you.
Okay. Am I released?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11, Mr. Billy Raven, would you state your name and your address, please?
Have to get it up a little bit. Good evening. I'm Billy Raven, 306 Louis Street, Bastrop, Louisiana. I come to appear before you to plead that you, let the numbers do the talking for you. We are given opinions, and all of us have opinions. This is a situation where we need to make sure that the city and that this community is best served. Now, I've changed my speech. I wrote one thing, but I'm saying another because I think it's important. I spent most of my years in education. I taught chemistry, algebra, and biology. All of those are exact sciences. Whatever you put in, you get out. If you have a company owned and operated by private industry, you get good service. It's regulated by, in Louisiana, by the Public Service Commissioners. There are seven of them presently. There'll be six after reapportionment. They run on congressional districts. Ask yourself, how many public service commissioners do you know? When something goes awry with your water bill, who do you contact? If your rates are increased by 20%, as it just happened to us, who do you contact? I say to you now, that if this should happen under a community-owned system, and by the way, one is meeting in Coliseum as we speak, so we're not asking for something as a city that's not going on throughout the state of Louisiana and throughout the country. I travel a lot. And when you go into a town, just look at the water tower and see what name is on it. Very seldom do you see private industry. I served on a commission for Mayor Hawkins, along with several people, including Mr. Madison. We were good friends on that committee. And our job was to study different municipalities in the state of Louisiana. We wound up in Minden. Minden owns this water, electric, and all those things. The mayor spent a lot of time with us, real proud that he had over $17 million in savings, and his city was operating in the black every year because of his utilities. And that wasn't because of taxes, because of the utilities, things that every citizen in this parish uses. We reap no benefit from it at the rate we're going. I talked to the people in Tallulah today. They own that water company now. People used to be there. People Water owned Tallulah up until 1998. They purchased it, but they purchased it not from Barnisha, they went to U.S. Department of Agriculture and got a loan. Their loan enabled them to purchase the water company, it's just about, I think it's paid off now. And they kept those rates low for 13 years. They had to do a rate increase in February, a small one. I have some numbers. So, I say to you, get the numbers, see what's best for the citizens of Bastrop before we form opinions. It's easy to form opinions based on information, but make sure the information is good information and not misinformation. With that, my time is up and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raven. Item number 12, Shanika Dejanette Bradshaw, purchase of water company and Atmos Energy.
Hi.
Would you state your name yet?
My name is Shanika Dejanette Bradshaw. I live at 112-1 Fairfield here in Bastrop, and I am in support of purchasing the water company. I am aware that Bastrop has lost some major corporations and some hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue over the past few years. So, in turn, I feel that we do need to maintain our current revenues, as well as create new revenue streams for Bastrop. And I am in support of us taking advantage of any revenue that is available to the city at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Board of Aldermen.
Your address, your name and address.
Reverend Donald Dejanette, 1104 Reece Street. I'm the public relations person for the Community Ministry Group. Our mission is to promote positive change in our schools, community, and municipal affairs. Tonight, we are here to endorse positive change in our municipal affairs. We recognize the great need for new revenues in our city since the loss of International Paper, Southern Plug, and other businesses. Therefore, we, the Community Ministry Group, support your efforts in the purchase of People's Water Service and Atmos Gas. Also recognizing that the city will need the experience and expertise of the present employees of People Water and Atmos Gas, we pray therefore that they will have the option of working for the city. We understand that you have already taken drastic cuts. In the fire department, you're already down nine firefighters. Police department, you're down seven officers. Public works, you're down 15 employers. We also understand that there are over 400 cities and towns already in the state of Louisiana that own their own water services. So, we believe that you and the Board of Aldermen are fully able to operate your own water and gas company. Therefore, we say to you, go up and possess the land at once. Thank you.
Thank you, each of you, for your comments. At this time, we will follow the lead. Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Steve Nasaka, if you'll make your way to the microphone, did you made any special notes to... in reference to the comments that we've heard?
Comments that I've noted have been very few in terms of actual questions.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I mean, we're pretty much open to any questions or concerns that anybody has, but the things that I know that really weren't questions, they were more expressions.
Okay. Mr. Nasaka?
Would like to comment on...
Our financial advisor.
Would like to comment on something Mr. Brewer said, and I appreciate his perspective and, and his experience and his concern and his, you know, and his feelings. The, but one of the things that he cautioned you and, and asked and pleaded, that you wouldn't be hasty in, in any actions relative to, to that, you know, to, to his company. And, and one of the things that I wanna make sure that, that the public hears, what you already know, that, that it has been, we're at this point, through much deliberation, much discussion, much back and forth, and much information exchange with you, you know, with, with the mayor and staff, as we've worked through the beginnings of this exploration process. So, the, there's nothing hasty about you council members, nor anything hasty about the, the mayor. It's, this has been very thoughtful, and, and it may have been not as, you know, not as much discussion with, you know, people's opinions as to how much information gets dispensed back and forth and that sort of thing. But the fact is, and I wanna make sure the public understands, that we have been, and we have gone through much thought, much deliberation, much concern for everyone, including the employees of those respective companies as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nasaka. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. This concept is not new. It's Mr. Raven indicated under the Hawkins administration. He saw this day coming. And he saw this day coming when International Paper Company was operating here. And we no longer have International Paper Company. So, our back is against the wall to do something. And this administration has, has been very attentive in looking at the needs, and we have also exercised sensitivity to the current operators of these utility services. And we certainly want to continue in a professional manner as we express our opinions. Thank you for your comments. At this time, I need to call for a vote to expand the agenda.
So, move?
Second.
Are there any questions? Comments?
Is this a planned agenda that's already, or something just come up that you started doing? If you want to expand the agenda, is it something that's...
Would you come to the microphone?
I just asked if this was something new that came up, that, that's happened since we've been here this evening, that you're expanding the agenda, or is this something prepared ahead of that?
Generally, we are working on information to provide to the citizens up until the very last minute. We had a resolution that we had to work on up until the very last minute. And also, we will be making a motion for another movement.
Yes, ma'am. I have two items.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You need to state the reasons why and read off that ordinance that you're gonna pass, is that right, correct, or they vote again?
Okay. Ordinance number 114199, an ordinance to prohibit the keeping and/or housing of horses, mules, and like animals within the corporate limits of the city of Bastrop by amending the section number 512 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Bastrop and repeal all other sections of the Code of Ordinance that are inconsistent with said prohibition and otherwise providing respect thereto. All in favor? We're at this point of taking a vote. Mr. Farrar made a comment.
Yes, and, and I take it, is that motion is for this one item for right now?
Yes, sir. And then we will take another vote on the...
Yes, yes.
Okay. At this time...
I'd like to make a motion, mayor, that we adopt ordinance...
We're not adopting. Just need to vote again, permission to give her to expand for that, that ordinance. That ordinance will not be adopted. It's just for introduction only. Next month, y'all come back and vote on it.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh...
Just to add this to the agenda.
Add to the agenda.
We have a motion?
I second that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, is it okay if I give a brief, I guess, overview of what the, of what we're doing at this point?
Yes, sir.
This is a new ordinance that is for introduction only, based upon much of the input that we've received from the Board of Aldermen and also from the mayor regarding the keeping of animals within the city limits. This is strictly for introduction only tonight. There is no action that's being requested under the city charter. It has to be introduced. There's also a publication requirement. I'm gonna recommend that you have a public hearing session on it, and then all of this can precede your next regularly scheduled council meeting. We can set this on the agenda to consider final adoption of this particular ordinance. So, it's only for introduction tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Also, I need to ask for a vote to go into executive session. Mr. Lawrence, if you'll speak to that by reference, I'm deferring this to you.
Yes. Mayor and Board of Aldermen, this, this is in reference to the ongoing discussions and actions that we've had regarding the public utility services here in the city of Bastrop. We wish to update the Board of Aldermen regarding recent developments, also to get guidance from you regarding the next steps that we should take. And so, this would be a request to convene an executive session to discuss those items with you. The basis for the executive session is the actual threat of litigation at this point involving those issues. It is a specific provision under the Louisiana Open Meetings Law that allows you to do that. It is a specific provision under the Louisiana Open Meetings Law that allows you to do that. And any action that is taken would come following your return from that closed session to this open meeting, to the extent that there is any action that you need to take. Now, you need to also understand this. Upon adding this to the agenda, you will also provide it that there's affirmative vote to do so, there will be a need for a second vote where at least four of you have to agree to allow us to convene an executive session. So you'll be voting to add this to the agenda first. And if that vote succeeds, you will then be voting to convene an executive session with the understanding that we will come out afterwards, and if there's any action to be taken, that action will be taken in an open session.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to add this item to the agenda.
May I make the motion?
Properly moved.
Second.
Are there any questions, discussion, public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will recess. I wish to express my appreciation to each of you for attending this meeting. Should you be gone when we return, thank you so much. Please continue to support your city. This call back to order. Ms. Goldman, roll call.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Our present mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Mr. Douglas Lawrence.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, as a follow-up to this council's action back in February of two thousand and eleven, at this time, it would be in order for the mayor and the Board of Aldermen to vote on the formal recognition of the law firm of Crawford and Og, that is, Mr. Brian Crawford and Mr. Ramsey Og, as being formally engaged as special legal counsel for the City of Bastrop for the specific purpose of initiating legal proceedings on behalf of the city in its pursuit of the, and acquisition of the utility services.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Having heard that presentation, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, ma'am.
Properly moved.
Second.
And duly second. Are there any questions, discussions, public comments? Yes, sir, would you come to the podium?
My name is Mark Rainwater. I'm employed by the Bastrop Daily Enterprise. And I guess my question would be to Mr. Lawrence. The state's open meeting statute, specifically RS forty-two seventeen, outlines the provisions that allow a government agency to go into executive session. And you and the mayor have continually cited the threat of pending litigation as the reasons to conduct these closed sessions. Having read the statute many times over the years, having read it since this board adjourned at eight o'clock, there's nothing in the statute that allows the city to go into executive session under the threat of pending litigation. Now, has the city received a written demand letter from People's Water or Atmos Energy as it relates to the consideration of the quick take and expropriation process?
Is that the only question?
At this time.
Okay, are there any additional questions? I can address it, but are there any additional ones?
We'll stop right there.
Okay. No other ones then?
It depends on your answer as to whether or not I have other questions.
I just, you know, just want to know.
Yeah.
Because I'm not at a deposition.
I understand.
And next, do you want me to answer the question? I have no problem with doing so. Would you like for me to? This is who I answer to.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and answer appropriately, Mr. Lawrence.
The city made the formal threat of litigation.
Is there a written demand?
It made, it made the threat of, it satisfied all of the requirements of what it is that you just read versus the reverse, which is, I think, the premise that you mentioned when you first started. So it's not a matter of People's Water, it is the city.
Well, and I understand that the city can, could initiate that proceedings. To qualify to meet the letter of forty-two seventeen, I believe it's three, there has to be a written, formal demand.
And I'm saying that that has been satisfied. I don't know how else to say it.
Can you produce this written demand?
Well, I'm answering your question. I'm saying that that has been satisfied.
Okay. And then my additional question would be, can you produce this written demand?
Well, it has been satisfied. The requirement is...
You're not answering my question.
But I'm not here to be deposed by you.
Okay. Mayor Alford, would you allow Mr. Lawrence to answer that question?
I trust Mr. Lawrence's answer, Mr. Rainwater, and do appreciate your concern. But this is not an interrogation of the city attorney, so I respect his answer.
Okay, well, then I will ask you, Mayor Alford. Can you produce a written demand that satisfies the letter of the statute?
Okay. Mr. Douglas Lawrence is the city's legal advisor, and I trust what he has said is sufficient.
I think it's been, I think it's been answered. I think that to go over and beyond the initial question is to be argumentative. It's to be...
Doug, I'm not intending to be argumentative. The statute states that there has to, specifically states that there has to be a written demand.
And I'm saying that requirement has been satisfied. And I explained how it has been satisfied. Now, to me, that's all that I care to say.
You haven't explained how it was satisfied.
That's all that I care to say.
But you haven't, you just stated...
But I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you feel that way. I have to say.
You just stated that you said it had been satisfied.
Mr. Rainwater, I appreciate your interest and your concern, and I also appreciate your coverage, but let us not reduce this meeting to an argument or debating or interrogating the city attorney.
Are you prepared to defend what he just told you in court?
Not necessary, ma'am.
I'm not talking...
Not necessary for any of you to have to respond or to defend anything.
Thank you, Mr. Rainwater. At this time, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, I believe we have gone through everything else. Ms. Goldman? At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion, ma'am.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.